All right, if I can have everybody's attention please. I've got actually 4:31, today is Monday, April 30th, and this is a combined work session and call meeting for the White County Board of Commissioners. I'm under the assumption Commissioner Nix will be joining us. I know he was traveling today, so hopefully he'll be here in just a bit. If you would please silence your cellphones. And hereby call this meeting to order. We have copies of the agenda on the podium. If you don't have one, we've got extra copies available. If you would, please rise. We recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we were, the Ministry of Alliance was unable to have someone here this evening, so I've asked our ordained Reverend Dean Dyer. I don't know if we have that power to ordain you, but anyway, would you bless these proceedings?
Please, tie with me. My gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day you've given us. We have really rejoiced in the sunshine, we thank you for the rain, but we still really enjoy sunshine and the times that we can get out and enjoy that. Thank you for this time that we can gather for this meeting. We ask your blessings on the proceedings and the judgment and decision-making by all these commissioners, give them the insight that they need to make to do things properly for the county and for you more. And, or thank you for those who will serve, those who will even think about serving, run for office. You know, we have candidates who are seeking the job, and we just ask that you would uplift them as their challenges that they go through as well. I ask your blessings for those who need your special touch, whatever the need may be, and as you bless us, guide us in each and everything we do, all these things we ask in your name.
Thank you, Dean. We do have a lengthy, lengthy agenda this evening, so if you see me trying to move us along through, I'm not trying to be rude, we've got a lot of items to try to digest in a few hours, so. And if you're on the, if you're on the agenda and you don't want to stay for a few hours, we understand, and if you would please exit quietly, I would appreciate it. We're trying to keep us moving along. Item four on our agenda, consider adopting the minutes of the March 26, 2018 combined work session and call meeting, including executive session minutes. Gentlemen, I hope you've had an opportunity to review those minutes. If so, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Commissioner Bryan. Commissioner Goodyear, second. Any discussion with the board? Okay, I have done all favor of approval. Are the motions signed by saying aye? Aye, both say no, motion carries. All right. Moving on to our presentations and proclamations, we have a couple of proclamations that we're doing this evening. First, the presentation proclamation. The White County Chamber of Commerce, we have representatives of the Chamber of Commerce here, recognizing that April 29 through May 5th is Small Business Week in White County, and... So, all right. Whereas, White County's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks and work hard. From storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy, the cornerstone of our nation's promise. Small business owners and Main Street businesses in White County have the energy and the passion for what they do. When we support small businesses, jobs are created in White County, communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas because of the county, because this country's 28 million, small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in a White County, Georgia economy, we cannot resolve ourselves, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. Whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. The White County Board of Commissioners supports and joins in this national effort to help small, America's small businesses do what they do best, is grow their business, create jobs, ensure that our communities remain vibrant tomorrow as they are today. And now therefore we as the White County Board of Commissioners here do by proclaim, proclaim, not complain, but proclaim, April 29. Rewind that, don't let that on YouTube. We are a pro-business and pro-business community. All right. Wow, I messed that one up. Anyway, we proclaim this is National Small Business Week in White County, and this is dated today, April 30th, Monday, by all five Commissioners. And if you would, if you guys would come up and get a picture, Carl, this means you too. All the chamber folks, if you'd come up, your board.
Come on, you invest in the chamber. You invest in the chamber, you invest in the chamber. I told you it's like church, I'm gonna call you out.
Call us out.
You got to come to the altar.
I gotta make sure I get them framed.
Oh, when you're...
There's gotta be a joke in this somewhere.
Do you have a tune?
Oh, yeah. Dean, your camera's awesome, Dean.
That's why he has you on the radio. And now on 93.9, A W O W, Esperanza, no charge for that, Dean. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. I can't see, hold on, I took my eyes off. Okay, we'll probably do a better job this time, 'cause I've got no takers up here, I'm trying to do any better, so. All right, National Trails Day, which is June 2nd, 2018. Whereas interest in outdoor recreation opportunities including walking, bicycling, hiking, kayaking, horseback riding, canoeing, and ORB riding, what's ORB stand? All right, if you had ATV, we understood, I'd have understood that. All right. Riding is on the horizon with White County residents and visitors. Whereas trails in White County enhance the quality of life for our citizens, increase tourist activity in the county, provide alternative transportation routes for non-motorized vehicles. National Trails Day is an opportunity to increase public awareness of White County's trail opportunities and diverse outdoor recreation activities, and promote the importance of local and national network of trails and greenways. Trail activities are enjoyed by people of all ages and abilities, are an important part of White County's outdoor recreational resources. Whereas citizens are encouraged to participate in the National Trails Day activities scheduled in White County and the region, to strengthen their commitment to preserving the natural and scenic and recreational qualities of White County trails. Therefore, the White County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims, proclaim, June 2nd, 2018 is National Trails Day. That's proclaimed that this is the 30th day of April, 2018. Mr. Brown, thank you for the opportunity given us to proclaim this. Our hope is that we as the county will be contributing to this, in particular Trail Side, as soon as we get Yon Preserve opened up, Trails 1 and 2, that it's gonna go right along with all our trails. And for those who had an opportunity, I know City Helen had representatives at the Harbin Farm Trail opening, which is phenomenal, and I shared this conversation with some of you. You know, you could hopefully have folks come up here on a Friday afternoon from Atlanta, have them come to our hotels, spend the weekend, go eat a nice meal Friday evening, then kind of walk it off, walk down Harbin Trail. It's easy, it's real concrete, easy to go. Right in their hiking boots, and then Saturday, we can send them up to Yon Preserve or our other trails, the Falls, all the other ones we have, and then if they want to do some tours of our wineries, and they go out and eat again Saturday night, stay another night. You see where I'm going here. And it led, this leads us also to our sales tax conversation we're gonna have a little bit. So, you see where I'm, kind of building the picture here, and Jeff's already got the money spent, I see him shaking. Anyway, Mr. Brown's okay? Would you need a picture for your, for your group?
Mr. Turner, you've got a long agenda.
Yes.
Suffice it to say that we are grateful to you for adopting this resolution into the Commissioners. The Appalachian Trail, 74 miles long in Georgia, stretches along the White County border up and over Trey Mountain. Helen is a designated Appalachian Trail community. In each county around the country where the trail passes through, a community is so designated that it becomes a marshaling location for through hikers and segment hikers. So it's economically important. And the Georgia Appalachian Trail Club, there are a number of members in White County, is grateful for the support of the Commissioners and its recognition of the economic and recreational benefit of the Georgia Appalachian Trail all across Georgia, and particularly in White County. And also I don't need a picture.
Okay.
I will need a signature.
We've already got it. We, we already pitched it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right. Move on to item seven. Mr. Kevin Hamby, our Spots Manager, present the monthly Spots status report. Kevin, you, you have the hill.
Okay, I'll go through this thing pretty quick, 'cause like you said, you've got a long agenda.
Yes, thank you.
This, this presentation includes the most recent check, which came in last week, the April check, which is really good. It's $355,000. It's about $10,000 more than neighboring counties.
He's referred to Union County for those two.
Let's check 41 and 72, so we're about 57% through the program. You can see that estimated revenue is 22.6. That's kind of falls in line with what we're talking about in the new Spots as well. So that, that's, we're almost 60% through the program, and that's what we're expected to proceed in total. This slide kind of explains all the revenue sources with total expected collections being a projection, and that's all predicated on $300,000 a month. So if we get 80 more checks at $300,000 a month or greater, then that number will hold true. As you see underneath, these are all the commitments that have been made today through the Board and documented meeting minutes. Includes the whole zero water upgrade at $100,000, that's a change, and there's 911 phone switches, system number that's in there as well. As you can see, if our checks, if our distributions from Board Department revenue hold at $300,000 or above, at the end of the year December, you should have about $777,000 in the bank. This does not include any of the additional road projects designated, but you not yet did, estimated at $709,963, which I think is out of 1300. So these numbers that you see on this financial analysis do not include any of that. You can see, so, end of the year, we're getting kind of tight, having, having a buffer in terms of cash flow. So that, that number will not be available until December.
And it also does not include the airport road bridge, we're gonna talk about that later, which is $85,000.
All right. Well, that's eight.
Somebody have any questions at this time? Again, Kevin, we're aware we're gonna be, matter of fact, there's only some items that possibly will be taken, as we are trying to be conscious, you know, you don't write checks before you have anything in the bank, it's as simple as that, so we're gonna be very diligent to that, to that again, so.
Yeah, the good news is, I mean, distributions are coming in really, really good, but you just never know.
It's going out really, really good, too.
You just never know. Thank you, gentlemen.
Kevin, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, this evening we do have a land use public hearing, and we have Mr. Knott And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I try to do this at every one of our public hearings. We have a certain, certain procedures that we try to adhere and keep ourselves to a certain standard. Within the public hearing, we'll be giving our staff, which Mr. Self here will be representing the county, a brief description of the project. We'll give Mr. Knott, who is the developer and applicant, an opportunity to describe his project, what's going on, and then I'll open the floor for public hearing. I'll give three opportunities for those who want to speak and support the project, and then three opportunities for those who have either concerns, questions, or perhaps could be opposed to the project, an opportunity likewise to voice their opinion. And then we'll close the public hearing, and then because we are in a call meeting, we'll be going into, I'll be asking for what the wishes the Board could be, could be motion approved, motion to deny, or motion to table, with potentially any questions that may come up from the public hearing. Having said all that, item eight, conduct public hearing of the land use application filed by Tanover LLC to Redistrict, property located at Georgia Highway 255 and Georgia Highway 384, going from an A1, which is agricultural forestry district, to a PD, PD being a planned development district. That's tax mapping parcel 074-053, a total acreage of 38.5 acres. Mr. Self, you have the floor.
Okay, you've heard where the property is, it has joined C1 Community Commercial District and R1 Residential to the south, R1 Residential Single Family District to the west, A1 Agricultural Forestry to the east, and A1 Forestry and R1 Residential Single Family to the north. The White County Comprehensive Plan, future land use plan, shows this area as single family low density, community commercial, and scenic corridor. The property is supplied by a well and septic tank. The public hearing for the planning commission was held on March 26th. They voted on April 2nd to recommend not to approve this plan development because of the lack of multiple uses, which they feel is the intent of the plan development. And with that, I'll let Mr. Knott have the podium.
Any questions for John, before he sits down, guys? Okay, all right. Mr. Knott, you have the floor.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'm gonna grab my easel and then run outside and set up this aerial photograph for the chamber. I don't know what best to locate this, we don't see it, so I'll sit around here and tell you to relocate it somewhere else, I'll be happy to do. So first, I'd like to read the planned development district guidelines and purpose intent, based on what I believe to understand. I interpreted this tract coincides with that purpose intent. This is in section 1600 of the White County Code of Orders, this is the purpose intent. "In the purpose of the planned development district to provide and encourage a voluntary alternative to district segregation of lot and property uses contained in the other districts in this resolution. The rural portions of White County are very important to the overall scenic, open space, agricultural character of the county. Typical practices of plating subdivision district commercial centers creates sprawling development land, out with little regard for natural agricultural scenic and historic resources with very little variety and design and density, and with little open space accessible to nearby property or support the public. The planned development district is a flexible alternative approach which encourages the grouping of building and lots on a small portion of tract where the developer can maintain the same residential common, but offer smaller lots with the remaining land dedicated or reserved for open space, agricultural or recreation. The land within approved planned development is intended to be planned and developed by a single developer or a group as a single entire unit of land. Land within a planned unit development shall not be subdivided and sold to others prior to completion of the installation of required improvements." So let me describe what I'm trying to do, and then we'll go into what the connotations might be for planned development district. This being Highway 255 of Blue Creek Road, this is a flat street with very little change in elevation from the western side of Blue Creek Road to each of sides, you have excellent visibility. I've met with Jonathan Peavy with the DOT, and reviewed some of this driveway. This here comes from Duncan Bridge, Phil Satterfield, now he's a local representative. It's a smaller subdivision, it doesn't require Jonathan Peavy's discussion. This is an area that we're trying to reserve for a playground and amenity area for the neighbors to utilize. And had Sarah Ford just do a rendering here, it shows a covered picnic pavilion, will have a playground area for children, and then a field that's approximately 60 or 80 feet wide, 120 foot long, for kids to play in soccer, basketball, and then a walking path that surrounds that area. If you can recall, maybe a year and a half ago, there was a concern about developing agricultural areas, so I waited and found a tract full of trees. So we let somebody else develop agriculture area. This is gonna be named the Blue Creek Forest. There are a lot of white pines, mature white oaks and red oaks, and a few hemlocks, as a matter of fact, that are, we're gonna save as many of those as possible. Why I'm trying to go to the planned development district, as you may or may not be aware, pricing for raw land in White County's come back up. We have folks from all over buying tracts of land for wedding venues, farms, I mean, we're back up to 16,000 and 20,000 acre on certain tracts getting sold. When you take that acre price, and then you go into development expenses, you start off with finished lots being in the 40 or 50,000, you add the cost of construction, and White County is where your new home pricing are exceeding 200,000 on a regular basis now. So you try to say, okay, how do you counter that a little bit? Well, you counter that by offering a little bit of higher density wherever you can, to improve your yield where possible, so that you can get some housing back in the high 100s again. And that was part of the intent of this project. The other intent of the project was provide a neighborhood field. There are other subdivisions in White County that can give you some of that neighborhood field. Ashwood Estates, for example, is a subdivision off of Luthenford Road, in which lots are .6, .7 acre. You've got a good neighborhood field, as a matter of fact, it's one of the most popular places for Halloween time. Chickasaw Trail, which is near Ashwood, is also subdivision in the county. You've got the field of taro oaks, there are several tracts that have been developed over a year, less than an acre. You look more modern now, in 2018, 17, 16, what are, what is a planned use development? Well, no one has done it in the context of subdivision yet here in a county, and so when you go to look at White County's ordinance, you didn't see that it's near verbatim copy of the Forsyth County ordinance. You go to Forsyth County, and you can look at their website, and pull this particular picture up, and anything that's green is on planned unit development district for Forsyth County. You can then go and pick, and I can show you track after track after track, which shows subdivisions that are just like mine, that are zone PD district in Forsyth County. And they range anywhere as low as 14 acres to as high as 200 acres. Some subdivisions have no amenities at all. There's not a single improvement, other than some open space that's set aside for vegetation. Some though do in fact have swimming pools and tennis courts and things of that magnitude. The roads though will be turned over to the counties, intended those roads to meet county specifications and be curbed, not curbed, but be cut with the perfect curvature of road base to meet county specifications going forward for runway. The water system, county water, is not near this location, and to my knowledge is not feasible to get to this location, and so I have been meeting with, and speaking with, Lauren Freeman with American Water on an EPD approved water system, so that the water system meets the guidelines to allow the health department to get you to a half acre minimum requirement of good soils, and allow you to have 100 foot wide building width. Just for clarity, guys, this intersection right here is the intersection of Highway 255 and Duncan Bridge Road, so this here is approximately 2,000 feet east of the intersection of 255 and Duncan Bridge Road. And this board also just had a little two-dimensional rendering for us of playground that we'd like to have in this area here, which can be accessed from this cul-de-sac or from this cul-de-sac. We're just trying to offer something different for families and for retirees that might have grandchildren, and they can have a safe place, and tell their kids, you know, we're at the Blue Creek Park, and they know where they are, they know where they're going. And that's the, the plan. You have any questions for me?
Gentlemen, any questions at this time for Mr. Knott? I would like to ask a question regarding, and I picked up on this, the, the concept of, you know, trying to keep as many of the old growth trees that are there, the hemlocks, oaks, and so on, with narrowing down, you know, some of the smaller lots, and I want to set this for record, I understand why, what, I understand what you're trying to do here. Like you said, get more bang for your buck. You use the more technical term, a better yield, and that, but you're able to get more lots in the smaller area, I understand that. Have you been able to, and I'm getting kind of in the left field a little bit, have you had an opportunity to run a perk test on any of the property? Because you know, each lot would have its own septic, correct?
That's correct. So Russell Biggers will likely handle my soils work. That is obviously an endeavor that costs a considerable expense, you know, I'm not ready to make that decision yet. Areas that I know, and so if you can envision, when you're going through this process, worst case scenario is what I've got here. Once I start doing soils, I get, things get pulled back. There is no ground protection here, so we don't have that, there's no ground water recharge, either of those things that might cause density to go up, or acres go up, we don't have those problems. But where do I think I'll have some soils constraints? There's gonna be some soils constraints in this area, there's a little road bed here that goes along this property line, and because of that, if you can envision, the road bed was built and there was earth cut out, and so there's some ground that kind of slows down before you have the bank of the road bed, so it holds some water there. There's gonna be a little bit rut in here that I'm concerned about. Here, this is a cold water stream, so I have a 50-foot buffer that I have to stay out of, and so my half acre good soils can't be, be in a 50-foot buffer. That's gonna impact density. So there's a couple of things that I'm aware of that are gonna impact density. When it comes to the building width though, the building width won't really change, some things might happen, for example, these, where Russell Cheaton, my surveyor, showed these lots on Blue Creek Road, but there will be no lots on Blue Creek Road. The road will actually curve a little bit harder to the west before it starts heading back north, so there's no roads, no lots service from 255. Some of this might change from soils, but my general guidance of soils work looks fine, except for these areas here, but that might force this cul-de-sac to get pulled back, and that'll change some acres there. Things that I would naturally consider would maybe be limitations, if we use that, we don't want to see more than a certain number of lots below an acre, or we don't want to see certain constraints. Those are things that would be open in the context of this, the grand scope of the project. I think the question then remains is, you know, what is anybody, when they're looking at planned development, what are we, what are we supposed to go by? And I think when I look at codes and look at what is here, what I'm doing coincides with the document, the planned development document says. There's nothing that says, when it talks about mixed uses, I'm not sure what the county means by that. It would be absurd to think I needed a designated spot here for a Dollar General, and if that's what the county wants, I'll do that, but I don't think that's necessary, and I don't think it's intended that planned development require mixed use of, say, apartments and housing. I don't see that anywhere in Forsyth County. There are a couple of planned development districts in Forsyth County that utilize both townhouses and single-family residences, but most of them do not incorporate that type of mixed use in the planned development district. of mixed use in the planned development district.
And I apologize a little while ago, I got, I got, I took a tangent for a moment, but regardless of the trees, when you get down to the point seven acre lots and with a narrow on it, I call the narrowness, that may not be correct English, I've got some retired schoolteachers in, in the room here, which I don't know what I'm talking about. You know, trying to keep, you know, the old growth with narrow lots, that's going to be challenging trying to get a job, a, a building site. And I'm getting into the weeds here just a little bit with a, with a septic tank. I'm just talking out loud, as if we're talking business.
So what happens is the building widths will not necessarily change. You know, the requirement is a hundred foot building width. I think what happens differently is instead of having a lot that's only three hundred foot deep, the lot can go four hundred foot deep. And so practically speaking, whenever you're developing property, the last thing you want is long driveway. It increases your cost. So generally speaking, all this infrastructure as far as housing, for all practical purposes, will be within, the front of the house will be between sixty and eighty feet from the street. The plan for this particular development is to grade the site for the house, the driveway, put in mulch around the back, but then go ahead and sod a thousand to two thousand square feet of front yard. So there's a finished product there and then you have that natural mulch look everywhere else. Do y'all have the topography that was presented as part of the original proposal?
Our bank is three figures, so. Yes.
All right. So I've got another copy there. If you see, what we're doing is we're laying out the road on what is the higher ground as we come through there. This is a ridge point up here and then we have this, this backbone coming down. So naturally, as if you were to try to put housing too far away from the road, you're just dramatically increase your cost of construction. And you're getting where your house elevation is lower than elevation of the road, so it doesn't have any curb appeal. But the road system is put in place based on the natural feel and look of the, of the thing. Now, the next issue that comes into play, and if y'all are familiar with Barry Blaylock, you did a great job with this with Laciola, is the field. And the field, this is the worst case scenario on data, right? It's okay, what is, what could a piece of property be manipulated to to maximize what gets pulled out of it? And that's what this shows. But you then have to walk the property and get a feel for where the homesites are. And the homesites are going to actually pull this back as well. Now, I'm not sure Travis, it's where you're getting at with the cutting of the trees, but the reality is you're going to go back and say, okay, is it a violation of reasonable nature and a taking of nature to have homesites here, 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 in the context of the topography and, and subdivision? I can't guarantee what that looks like without walking the property.
No, there's not many trees on Ashwood. There's not, I don't remember any trees, pretty much in Ashwood. That's why I'm going for that, with your description, by trying to keep the old growth, by narrowing the lots down. I don't see how you're going to be able to keep many trees.
Well, you can see, yeah, what's going to happen is you can say, okay, you know, one point seven, then what then happens is instead of this road getting punched in, that road doesn't get punched in there. These lots there, this block's skinny lots. Instead of having these lots here, then you're going to say, well, there's a couple, because these are skinny, you're running here going back, then you're going to have a couple of lots here. The reality is there's no if, ands or buts about it. If you go into a minimum one acre, there's less density. And there's no if, ands or buts. The math says that there's going to be four to six lots left taken away, which means there's four to six lots where the trees haven't been cleared. You can't fix that.
I understand, and I got off on a tangent there, but you know, I just was saying you're going to be able to keep many trees.
So have you figured if, if you go to a one acre minimum on the side, you figured how many lots you will lose?
Four to six.
Four to six. That's for the thirty, what, thirty-seven plus or minus you got?
Yeah, we're looking at, yeah, thirty-one to thirty-three possibly. And gentlemen, I don't know if you're aware of more than where it is, but soils may trump a whole lot of stuff.
Well, the soils could trump it on a one acre too.
They can, that's right.
Especially when you've got water on the property and, and some of the issues you've got to.
That's the reason we're trying to put this boundary right here. We don't want anything crossing. This is a creek coming through there. It's actually something, you know, an attractive creek, won't stay clear of that. I don't want any infrastructure around that. I don't want any septic around it, want any houses around it. This will be a bridge that would build for the purposes of walking from this cul-de-sac here and they're putting walking into the playground. You can do that.
How you going to get water to the five lots on the left hand top corner if you're not going to cross nothing on that? And actually, and I teach me on the water, because sitting on, you've been on the board too, I mean, ain't a day don't go by that some subdivision ain't calling us and wanting to stake over their water system. I mean, so you're going to drill out one big old well and you're going to.
In order to be, yes, sir. In order to be easily approved, and then I might have two wells. Now, a well hasn't had a water line, go across the creek somewhere. But it's, if I have one well on this side of the creek and one well on the other side of the creek, at a minimum. And the EPD approved system's going to be steel casing, grounded all the way around the bedrock and eight inch casing, and then those have to be minimum GBMs. And if I don't get the minimum GBMs on those two wells, then I got to drill a third well. And if I don't get that a third well, I got to do a fourth well. So I have to keep going. Lauren tells me what to do and then American Water takes it over from there. I'm not.
It's our ten years down the road, the wells dried up and there's still no water out there. Everybody's got to start drilling wells.
Well, American Water's requirements set up one time. I mean, I don't intend to manage that. I don't want to be in order of this either thing. I'm just trying, I tend to give.
I know, I know. There's a well out there, there's no water out there. Listen, let's just bring it in.
Lauren and Larry will take care of the water issues.
I guess I just need to be educated and, and what, I mean, this looks like a normal subdivision with smaller lots, so much, just, just to be honest with you, it's like just a, a normal subdivision with smaller lots. And, you know, we've, we've pretty much got the consensus on the one acre minimum. Chad, tell us, tell us what makes you think that, that explains the requirement of the land.
Sure. So the intent behind it, number one, was that y'all have a minimum acre. So your planned development district requires twenty acres to set aside, right? So this is okay. Well, if you have at least a twenty acre tract, we will, as a county, consider doing something that deviates from the agricultural residential district. Now, keep in mind, right now, there's technically nothing different between agricultural residential for the purposes of zoning. Some counties have minimum. For example, Bucks County will have a minimum of agricultural three acres. If you want to get a residential that's one acre, then you have a planned development district that goes beyond that. Here, the intent behind mixed use, when you look at Forsyth County, they have allowed planned development districts which met the minimum and provided a density of housing and open space and green space, which may or may not have used amenities, including amenities. So the difference here is my setting aside common area, setting aside buffer if necessary to make it fit the planned development district guidelines. The fact that we know for sure what the subdivision's going to look like, how the thirty acre acres are going to be utilized.
And I guess the next question becomes the question for staff then. If the planning board turned this down, John, what, what was the reasoning behind the planning board's decision?
As I stated, they, they felt like the planned development is a multi-use, which has, commercial, has more than, states in there has more than one residential housing option. And they felt that that was the intent of the planned development and that's why they recommended not to approve.
Chad? Yeah, I don't understand how many, it looks like to me that everything you have here would have fit into a regular subdivision. And so you just chose to call this a PD so you can get smaller lots.
Right. Now, what would happen if I chose a normal plan is I would not spend the fifty hundred thousand dollars on amenity area. I would say, okay, we're going to have one acre minimums. We'll just have this subdivision be like all the others is what would likely occur. Now, the issue for me is still one of clarity. Well, I think for me, I'm confused about the county's interpretation of PD district when it's a verbatim copy of Forsyth's and when you see Forsyth implementing this. I would just like to see the county, if they could, provide some more rigor and, and details of planned development district to provide some further instruction of this is what we think planned development district means, as opposed to not look like this.
Any other questions, Mr. Knott? Because I do have the public hearing section I've got to go through. Mr. Knott, thank you. At this time, I want to move forward on the public hearing section. I kind of went over the, I was kind of ground rules a few minutes ago. I'll open the floor up for anyone who's, who is here in support. Again, I'll issue three calls and then we'll do the same thing for those opposed or have concerns about the application as it's presented. All right. At this time, I'll open the floor up. First call for anyone with, who is here in support of Mr. Knott's application. And also another note, there are several times we have, we go through these public hearings, we don't have comments either way. So don't, don't, again, don't take this as a positive, negative or indifferent. It's part of the process, so. All right, I'll ask another, a second time for anyone in support. Raise your hand, I'll get to you. All right. All right, third call. All right. Ms. Shanda, if you'll notate the record, I'll issue three calls for anyone who would like to speak in support of the application as presented or in support. At this time, I'm going to open the floor up for anyone who has concerns or perhaps could be opposed to the application.
Chad, does I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what would the, is it being able to do it under the planned development district, will that allow it to be more affordable housing? Is that what that is designed?
Well, I'll tell you what we'll do, because we're in a public hearing session, we'll notate that question.
Okay.
And then we'll come back out of this.
I'm sorry.
No, you're cool, that's.
I didn't know what appropriate time was.
I'm making notes if you want to. All right. All right, third call. Going once, going twice. All right. All right, Ms. Shanda, if you'll notate the record, and we will get back to Ms. Boswell's question in just a moment. Add no other, we'll call takers, comments regarding opposition or concerns on the application. So I hereby close that part of the public hearing section. But I will take another privilege of Mr. Knott to follow up on Ms. Boswell's question. Under your covenants, you have, what's your definition of affordable housing? Just to put it bluntly. Size of the house, and go ahead.
So with a PD district, the minimum square footage would be fourteen hundred square feet. And if we were doing one acre, the minimum would likely be around sixteen hundred square feet. What it does allow for is approximately fifty to twenty thousand dollar production in the sales price of a house. Realistically, they're still going to be in the high one hundreds. The idea, anybody building in a hundred to fifty, under sixty thousand, don't think those days are, those days are gone now, assumption.
All right, so if, if your, your application's approved, under a PD, your minimum square footage would be fourteen hundred square foot. Correct. Yes, sir. Okay. All right. Thank you. Again, to reiterate, we closed the public hearing section, move on to item nine, which is consider the land use application filed by Tanbury. Is that how you pronounce it? Tanbury?
Yes, sir. It's my two boys.
Well, I figured that, but I just, I didn't want to act ignorant because most charters can't pronounce that real well. So I'm just being serious. I get, I get flattered home, I go home, I can't pronounce things correctly. Yeah, English. Consider the land use application filed by Tanbury LLC to read district property located at Georgia Highway two fifty five and Georgia Highway three eighty four from A one Agriculture Parcel District PD, which is a planned development district, tax map zero seven four parcel oh five three, total acres of thirty eight point five nine. Now, gentlemen, we have a, we have application in front office. Again, we received a referral from the planning board to deny the planned development application based upon, they just, they didn't feel like that it met the definition from their interpretation of what a PD should be. Mr. Butt, bluntly, wash your wishes, gentlemen.
I think I would, I think I would concur with the, the planning board itself that I think that, I think I would, I'll make the motion that we concur with the planning board and deny the use of a public, as a PD planned development. And I would recommend that he go to a regular subdivision for this.
Okay. I have a motion, visual motion by Commissioner Goode to go with the recommendation from the planning board to deny the application as a planned development with the suggestion that it be reviewed at later date as a regular subdivision. Is that your motion? Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a second now, we're in discussion. Any other questions, comments for Mr. Knott?
Let me, let me ask one. So if we go, if it, from a planned development to a subdivision, and you've got the lots in here estimating thirty seven plus or minus, you go to the subdivision, one acre lots, that would put it to what?
Going to be four to six left.
Four to six, okay.
One of thirty, one of thirty. If he takes his common, if he leaves his common area in, that's what, if he takes his common area out and puts it into the lots, then no, it might not hurt him in this way.
And that common area that's on the west side.
How big was that common area?
It's on the west side. So if you can vision the common area being in, say, flat bottom land.
Right.
Where you have ferns and other moist product, soils won't be, I mean, I can't use the house.
So the common area doesn't be used, start with it.
It's right past Mr. Freeman's place over there.
All right, have none, closed discussion. Motion to accept the planning board's recommendation to deny the application as presented. All in favor of the motion, do you want to say no? Or say no?
I'll say no.
You say no. All right. Motion carries. Mr. Knott, we do appreciate your time, though.
Thank you, guys, for listening. I appreciate if y'all let me present.
Yes, thank you.
That helps, that's okay.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Moving on. Deep breath, so I'm going to get up and do that stretch break in a few minutes. Item ten, consider.
I just want to say that, did everybody vote?
It was four to one. It was.
Okay. So a no vote means they're in favor of the plan?
Yes. The motion was made to go, to accept the recommendation of the planning board, which was not to recommend approval of the planned development. So as backwards as that sounds, the motion was to accept their recommendation, which was to deny the application.
So what people accepted and one did not?
Correct. All right. Moving on, item ten, consider approval of county's proposed twenty twenties loss project list. And I do want to recognize, I appreciate we have both representatives from City of Allen and City of Cleveland here. I do know you guys, y'all have a beating tonight?
Yes.
No beating tonight? Well, y'all picked a bad night, I mean, no offense, okay? Sorry. All right. This item on our agenda is to set the official list of the White County projects outlined by the county for the proposed sloss that will be voted on potentially in November this year. And that would go from twenty twenty through twenty twenty six. Did I get my dates correct, Mr. Melton?
Yes.
Okay. So gentlemen, we're going to be looking at our list to make things official. The cities, I'll give them an opportunity. The cities, I'll give them an opportunity here in just a little bit to discuss, due to time, and this was shared with the city administrators, five minutes to kind of share with your projects you've got going on. I've had the opportunity to meet with the cities regarding the projects, so a lot of this, gentlemen, is for your information, if you're not already aware of it. Under this proposal, the county would agree to drop the level one designation of the courthouse, therefore all projects would be weighed evenly, and it would be a level one. Also, after review, and you guys also saw the, the numbers presented by Mr. Hamby, we're continuing to see good splot dollars, sales tax dollars, so after having discussions with both cities, there's been a consensus to, originally, it was, we were estimating, what, twenty-three million? There's a consensus to raise that estimate to twenty-four million, which again, I'll make a note, isn't estimate. So no matter what we all get, we're all going to get the same amount, whether it's twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, who knows, twenty-eight means, that would be, that'd be phenomenal. But, anyway. And then, gentlemen, also, I'll be asking, in that same motion to the power, our county manager, to meet with the city administrators, to bring back to us at a later date an agreed percentage compact between City of Allen, City of Cleveland, and the county that we will be placing on the ballot in November. So that's going to be tab number ten, gentlemen, in your book, and I'll read these aloud, what these projects are. Number one, and this is how I've got it in my book, to provide funds, pay for installment purchase payments, including the principal interest and cost owed to the White County Building Authority, which is to the new Yona Preserve Park that's being constructed, finding it. Number two, courthouse renovations and/or addition, as well as administration, equipment and facility. Now, a copy of all this will be available to the media, let me, I don't, good luck trying to keep up with all this. Mr. Mountain and Ms. Shanda, get your copies afterwards. We have in there also 911, fire, EMS, equipment, facilities and vehicles, roads, bridges and equipment, vehicles, resurfing improvements, parks and recreation, equipment, facilities and vehicles, sheriff's department, equipment, facilities and vehicles. That's what we have in hand. That total comes to a estimated based upon around sixteen million eight hundred thousand dollars. Gentlemen, your thoughts, concerns, good, bad and different? And then I'm going to give the cities an opportunity to address the board after we take care of this matter, on our, our direct projects, since you guys have already approved your own projects, correct? Okay, thoughts on? Make sure.
So this, this, this is based on seventy-two month?
Yes, sir. And thank you for bringing that up, I failed, there's many things, it's hard to keep up with everything. If the cities of Allen and Cleveland, along with the county, if we agree to a intergovernmental agreement, state law allows us to do a six-year or seventy-two-month splot vote. If we do not come to an agreement, and I, I'll be, I'll go on record, I would encourage all, it's better for all parties involved to participate, work together, when mules work together, they're going in one direction, we'll go a lot further. Don't put that in the newspaper, read it, please, because you know what I'm trying to say.
I'll verify now.
Okay, we'll leave that alone. But, anyway, if we, for some reason, hardly would come to an agreement, state law requires us to go a five-year splot and then split about, split based upon population. Great, Mr. Mountain?
That's correct.
All right.
So this twenty-four million is based on three hundred thirty-three thousand a month, is that the?
Yeah.
Splot farm?
I still think twenty-four million plus. For every minute we're going to do nineteen, now we're going to do twenty-two, six, so we get a million three off. I still, I don't mind all the time for five million on the courthouse, I just don't see a minute five million dollars down there, it's just my first hand.
Well, back to your total amount, it, it does affect, what I'm saying, we're going to get what we get, in theory, we could put thirty million, and we're sure we get the same percentages. It's just rule of thumb that the counties have always tried to err on the side of caution and present to the citizens an insurgent figure, instead of under, under promise, under, under deliver, I'd rather under promise and over deliver. That makes any sense?
There were sixteen there one time.
We're all still going to benefit from this, whether it's twenty-four million or sixty million. Well, that's not going to change anything.
Correct. All we're doing is approving our projects.
I think that the courthouse, I believe that if we don't make some type of strong move on the, on courthouse, that we'll probably end up with a standard job that we won't want to do, and I think that it, we've already thought about and started moving in the direction of this, this expansion to the courthouse, and we could, we could, right now, the courthouse probably needs, they need more room right now, they don't have enough circulation space, and they have problems with the interaction or between the, yeah, them and the jury pool. So, there's lots of, lots of problems there, and I'm just going to, girls of the county looking down the road, we, we will probably build at this time a little bit more courthouse than we need, but it'll be something that will, that will, that will use sometime in the next twenty years there, so.
Well, there's no way we could replace a old building for anywhere near what we're talking about.
I wonder what that would have cost ten years ago? It would still be paying us.
And for clarification, though, to be honest, we're not talking about tearing the entire courthouse down and build a brand new, I won't make that very clear. We're talking about rebuilding the exterior of the existing building, we've already done work on the inside, and then the old jail, tearing it down, build an annex building and attach it to the existing building, and tie it all within the same facade, that's what we're talking about, impossible flip flopping the entrance to come off, create a park side instead of 129. So, that would make it a little more at steady, lend itself to the dynamics of the courthouse. That's under, still under planning stage, though. Thoughts?
We gotta do, I know we gotta do something, like, to Mr. Goode to say, sometimes it being mandated, it's something off of the last, you know, so.
All right, well, gentlemen, I'm, without delaying things, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the county's list as presented.
I'm going with, since the county's list, dividend aid, begin it.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Goode, you're first, and Mr. Hoffman, second, discussion. And again, what this does, this solicites the county's projects, what we're going to be doing, as well as empowering our county manager to work with the City of Cleveland, City of Allen, on bringing back the actual intergovernmental agreement for us, as well as the city's review. Any other questions?
So y'all don't get any easier.
All right. All right, first, second, closed discussion. All in favor of the motion of accepting the dividend aid and empowering our county manager to work with City of Cleveland and Allen on final intergovernmental agreement, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, both say no? Motion carries. Thank you. Now at this time, and I'm going to ask Mayor Ash, Mayor Ash. There's got to be a joke in here somewhere. Y'all want to do it to me, so anyway. One of you, you guys, if you'd like to, take a few minutes and share with the crowd and the board, your projects, what you're going to be doing with your proposed funds.
Go ahead, Sam, you want to?
And if you need to push that back, just.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be agree, because I respect your, your time, and I understand, and I respect Mr. Goode's comment about the mandate for courthouse, because we're looking at a mandate on our sources. EPD is going to be lowering our limits, that's going to be a major project for us. We've put a lot of infrastructure in place, and, you know, some of our service areas include the county with our sewer and water, one of your largest employers, and we appreciate the fact that we have partnered with you guys, because that makes it easier for us to obtain funding, outside funding, to complete that, that whole corridor all the way back to the tank, so I'm excited that we're going to make those improvements. We, the city voted along with the water authority to maintain a twenty percent of our contribution to our capital reserve fund for the Turner Creek Water Plant, so we know we've got some things, some issues coming down right there. We've got a lot of, I think, good, positive things going on in the city, we've got a lot of new businesses coming in, I think a lot of that is probably, you know, some of these increases you're seeing is some of these businesses coming in, and I believe in, in the retail side of bringing these dollars in, for, you know, through the cities and the county, but I, I think the City of Cleveland has a good potential to be a driver for these funds. I would just ask that, you know, these numbers that we're talking about right now, what you guys presented is, you know, somewhere around fifteen, probably fifteen percent, and we have asked for twenty-three. That would be an increase from thirteen to twenty-three percent. You know, our biggest project is going to be the sewer improvement, and we know that's coming, and so we're gonna, you know, we're having to look at a, a more conventional type system to, to be able to, to get the limits that they're going to require of us, because we're treated to Lake Vanier. But, we are also stewards of the environment, and, you know, it's just like, we look at it as, as water reclamation, you know, people think, you, you don't drink sewer water, but in reality, it's going down the line, and somewhere, somebody's going to pick it back up, and it's going to be treated, and so that's the way it is, and that's the way we work with the, you know, through the Turner Creek and the water plant and the city discharge, we're reclaiming all of that water, putting it back down the line, and so there, you know, that's going on all in Lake Vanier and everywhere else, so that we know they're going to lower these limits. I would just ask that you guys look at the city as an investment, if, you know, an investment in, in White County, to increase these, you know, these funds that we've asked for, I think if we got the twenty-three percent of the twenty-four million would be about five and a half million, I think. And those are some real needs that we're looking at, and I'm, I appreciate you guys' time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the remainder of my time to our city administrator, Tom O'Brien, and he can elaborate a little bit more on, on what our actual needs are, so. Thank you, Ash.
Thank you, gentlemen, I'll be quick and brief. The city's request came in at five point four million dollars, which is twenty-three percent of the original number, I think they dropped it down to twenty-two and a half percent, if you would increase that number. And we, you know, we requested that two point four million of our funds go towards water, wastewater improvements. We're looking at four and a half million dollar minimum improvement, required improvement mandate by EPD for our wastewater plant, and we plan to allocate a little bit more than a million and a half dollars towards that. We also have sewer line replacements and upgrades of three quarters of a million dollars, and so that takes up two point four million dollars of our, of that particular part of our, our request. The acquisition for, pretty much for capital funding, for other public facilities and infrastructure, our, we hope to build a municipal complex, and that includes our police department and our fire department upgrades there, and also make sure our police department has vehicles, adequate vehicles, and that request comes up to one point five million dollars. Like you, we have roads, streets, and bridges, and resurfacing that needs to take place, we have some major intersections and streets that are cut throughs now, that used to be residential areas, so we're looking at upgrading those areas, that comes up to one point one million. And then we do have some cultural recreation areas where we hope to spend some funds in the amount of four million dollars, but the beauty of that particular item is one point five million dollars on our, our budget list of capital items. Our total capital budget comes up to seventeen point six five million dollars. The contribution of the splot funds for us is, is very important. We hope that you'll look at that amount and, and look at that percentage and try to get us to where we, a percentage where we need to, to be to help drive and lead economic development in and around the city limits, out in our service area, that's out in the county, so we hope that you'll look at that percentage and be favorable to a higher percentage of projects that we need. We don't want to run into what we've run into with our, our current project, where we're trying to have to partner and figure out where we have money available, make sure it's available to, to meet the needs and demands of our future water, wastewater, and, and the growth that is associated with it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Ash Senior? I, I just thought of that, senior and junior.
I'd like to introduce my commissioners, St. Spurlock, Lee Landris, Old Truck City Manager, Jerry Elkins, and we appreciate the opportunity to come down and try this, and I want to present to you a list, which I think you're going to sign, don't want to hit one seat yet, and that, five million dollars.
At least, I've been calling you a mule, and now I've been called a mule. It's just a good deal, Bob.
Let's talk about the five million, just, it's five million here, a million here, fifteen million over here, plus. But more importantly, it's how the funds are generated. The one percent, based on your projections right there, the county would have to be doing somewhere around three hundred and seventy-five million dollars gross, and I think that's something that we need to pay attention to, because not only are we looking at the last two years of this splot, 2014, but we're getting ready to vote on another one for six years, which binds you and the municipalities to eight years of restriction, revenue growth, independent of that is created. And I think that we all can agree that, as shampooed, your municipalities are your investment. The rest of the county is most important, but your municipalities are your concentration areas for retail sales. I'll give you an example, I think, Mike, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but the twenty-four million dollars, is a correct scheme?
Twenty-four million is what we're.
Would be based somewhere on about three hundred and seventy-five million dollars to grow sales, right?
Probably. I haven't looked at the gross sales.
Well, I like looking at that, and we've already hit that. And based on, since 2014, we've had about a twenty-five million dollar growth per year. So for example, if we grew to four hundred million dollars, each percent is worth forty million dollars over the life of the, the life of it. So I would. So I would ask in the deliberations that will transpire between the city managers and all is that we pay attention to our growth because the growth can make up the difference in how we, it can choose our projects. If we spend our money as we collect it, I don't know where we'll be three years from now. I've done some projections that show Cleveland and Helen growing and bringing in new business, new restaurants, new establishments. We'll get at a half billion dollars and keep climbing. Well, every year that that climbs, your Board of Education is getting the same amount of money that we're sitting here talking about giving up in SLOSH. And we also enjoy the benefits of SLOSH. So whatever, whatever we're talking about, the county is benefiting times three. So if we do $400 million, that's $4 million for the Board of Education, it's $4 million for SLOSH, it's $4 million for SLOSH that year, for a total of 28 million because you get 7%. So I would just ask that please recognize it because in our request, half of it is for water and wastewater treatment. We need a lift station. We got 93 million gallons of sewage that has to be lifted and put in that pond. And those lift stations are not cheap. We have 19 miles of roads that 6,800 people average have visited the town. That's an average total. So what we're asking for is something I think that we're creating in the form of retail sales that in turn turns into sales tax and goes to the board, goes to you, and comes back to us. And let's just keep the tourist count. I hope you build whatever you want to because it benefits me as a White County. Whatever Cleveland does, it benefits us all as property owners there. What goes on in Lindsay is beneficial to people in Mount Creek. So we've got to look at it that way. And I think you'll find out a lot of this very much flowing to work. And I appreciate your time. I'll, I'll get any questions, I mean.
All right, thanks to Cleveland, Alan. Thank you all so much. I mean, I know this is, you took time, extra time out of your schedules, especially to have a meeting tonight. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all. Our, you'll be hearing from Mr. Melton, Jerry, and Tom this week. And I'd encourage you guys to get together as soon as possible because I think we're all motivated to get this done rather sooner than later. So we appreciate it and thank you all very much for your time. And I think we all try to be good stewards of the sales tax dollars that are entrusted to us all. So, thank you all very much. All right. Next, on our agenda. All right, number 11. Consider approval of purchase for 2019 F-250 four-wheel drive with the White County Road Department and 2018 Ford Explorer for the Emergency Management Department. The transfer of the 2015 F-150 crew cab truck from EM Emergency Management to the Road Department. All right, so maybe, I can understand it, but I know it's very hard for everyone out in the audience to understand what I was describing. So what we're looking at doing is Dave Kanjimi, our Public Works Director, we're looking at transferring, discussion-wise, simplistically say, transferring a four-wheel drive crew cab from Emergency Management to the Road Department. Road Department purchasing additional truck as well as a Ford Explorer that will be going back to Emergency Management. All this will be done with proceeds of the sale of some equipment the county approved 30-ish days ago. Did we get our check from Stevens County? That was my first question, is the cash in the bank? All right, Dave, you have the deal.
Pretty much, you said it all. I mean, that would...
I'm trying to move this thing forward, I really am.
I'll go back over it so everybody understands. Staff and I request being to purchase the 2019 F-250 four-by-four for the Road Department Construction Group, $27,095.84, and a 2018 Ford Explorer for the Public Safety Director, $27,955. Both vehicles will be purchased from Jackie Jones Ford with a state concession price. Therefore, there's no need for going out and bid with a state concession. Public Safety Director will transfer his 2015 F-150 to the Road Department. The project will be purchased from the sale of the 2007 distribution truck sold to Stevens County in the amount of $70,000. Total price of both vehicles requested, $55,050.84. The remaining $14,949.16 can be used for the outfitting of the vehicles and other road construction needs. Being with that in a nutshell, I answer any questions.
Okay, outfitting of the vehicles.
For...
And Emergency Management. David Walker. Yeah, Dave and David. So wasn't there special something going into your Explorer we're talking about?
Yeah, there'll be a special cabinet designed built to go in the back of it. It'll have whiteboards and computer docking stations and stuff like that in the back. So we're essentially getting a price on that now, but it's going to be around three or four grand, depending on the options we get on there.
Will that take out your second row seat, not your third?
No, it will not. It will, it'll stay, the seats will stay in there. It will fit in that cubic space that's in the back of the Explorer.
So there'll be a third row seat?
No, it doesn't.
That'll be gone?
Yeah. Well, I don't think there's a third row on the interceptor package.
How many have we gotten, 70,000?
Yes, we have. All right, any other questions for Dave, guys? We tabled this last month and just as a point of reference, the reason they were talking about a Tahoe, they have since gone to a Ford Explorer due to the little more economic pricing of an Explorer versus a Tahoe. Is that a good description? Yeah, okay. I'm getting heads not to the record up and down. Gentlemen, how do you feel?
What's this going to bring us to for the Road Department, road crew, or vehicles? We got, how many vehicles do we have now?
Total vehicles?
The one, what's the one that, what's the one that's hauling the equipment?
We just purchased a F-250 for the loan crew.
Okay, 2017?
That was the, that was the 18.
18, okay.
So that's the one that replaced the one that brought down on the...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we got that one, and then we wanted this other, this one, the 2019 F-250 that you requested is the same.
That'll be for the construction crew to pretty much replace the F-350.
That we're...
Train, the 140,000 miles of floorboards you rested on it and the doors and the transmissions.
Big rig.
Big rig.
Red one.
The train.
What kind of body is this one? It's not a four-door, right? Or is it?
It's a four-dog crew cab. For the construction crew. Totally needed.
And we got the new dump truck.
We got the new dump truck. And then this other one we replaced, the one that I've been driving, and that will still remain in fleet. We still need more vehicles. And little by little, we're getting...
We're about there, little right.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 you need, your anticipation is...
Closer, closer.
Okay. Since we've already sold this up on Stevens County. I'm okay with this.
Is that a form of a motion?
I'll make the motion if you make improvements.
Mr. Hall first, and Mr. Bryant second. We're in discussion and this is a form certification. This will be paid out of the proceeds account. This is not being financed out of our SLOSH dollars. So we have the cash in the, cash in the bank from the sale of the paving equipment that we sold over the last 30 days. All right, any other questions for the board? Or have none, all in favor of the motion, sticking up if I say aye? Aye, folks say no, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12, some information's come out there on this acceptance of Shepherd Drive with County Road Maintenance. I'm going to answer a motion to table that. We're trying to get a follow-up meeting with the property owner.
I apologize. I have, I was, that was assigned to me and I, my intent was to talk to him and I've been out of town since last Wednesday. So I will be back on that, back on that road again in a few days. But I will, the motions are taken.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, all in favor of the motions, first and second, say aye? Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Item 13, consider approval of spring 2018 SLOSH road projects for bidding. Gentlemen, having looked at this information over the last few days and where we are on SLOSH dollars, I'll just be candid with you. I would like to recommend that we table this item to our next work session to give our SLOSH manager, Mr. Hamby, an opportunity to run updated numbers for us if I request.
I will make that mark.
Mr. Nixon first. Mr. Bryant second, all in favor? Folks say no, motion carries. And we will be bringing this up at the next commission meeting, the next work, next work session that we have. So, and Mr. Melton, I'll give review and Mr. Hamby over the next couple of days on what I'd like to see on our cash flow to be presented to the board.
Okay.
So we can stay, stay ahead of everything. My brain just stopped, I'm sorry. Item 14, consider redesignation. And we are going to take a five-minute break after item 14. Consider redesignation of local maintenance improvement grant, L-MIC funds. Mr. Melton, you have the deal left?
In your packet, gentlemen, you have a list of proposed projects. As you know, we're working on getting Town Creek Bridge and put on the State Bridge program, get that replaced. And what we would recommend, and I can, Dave elaborate on it if it may be, is to do the two bridges that we had previously proposed on New Bridge Road at 372 120 and 372 928. And then use the remaining funds to pave batch mill level and resurface Westmoreland Road from Highway 254 to Highway 130.
My current question on, on the, on the money that was, that they were asking us, the estimates that we got on the bridge on Town Creek Road, how much was that? How much money are we kind of saving by shifting that into the state today and taking that over? Is that estimate over a million dollars?
Yes, yes. And let me kind of reiterate plus what we're talking about here. We had approached the state, the state of Georgia, and we talked about this, I believe, last month. The state of Georgia, 1958, constructed, they'll hold me to that year. I wasn't born, but...
You weren't.
You were. We're just a little bored tonight, we got to have some fun. Constructed Town Creek Bridge. And... Yeah, 1958. That road i- is going to need some maintenance over the next couple of years' work. We had approached the state of Georgia over the last few months and request they relook at Town Creek Bridge under their State Bridge Program that they've got under the state. I forgot the exact name, Mr. Melton, you can, you're more literate on those type items. But the state has agreed to take Town Creek Bridge as a project. Therefore, us as White County will not have to pay for that.
It's a State Bridge Replacement Program.
Thank you, I knew there was a term. So we're going to be able to allocate the funding that we held back for our L-MIC, which is our local maintenance improvement grant. We're going to be able to use those funds towards, I call them, smaller projects, New Bridge Road Bridges as well as Westmoreland Road. So that's the, and for the media later, Mike can give you information regarding all that. That's just to kind of give you a brief synopsis.
Basically what we've done, we saved enough money from one project to do three.
Yes.
Basically what we guessed.
We found favor, and we're very thankful. So it's a big deal.
The only, it's a great thing, the only it'll be bad when they tear the bridge down. I can, I'm going to tell you my telephone number when they do that. They know a lot of folks live out there that it's going to be a burden to them that the bridge not be enough. But that's a couple of years down the road. Even though it may not be your burden, I might be on the other side.
Now here, now you're the one bringing it up.
When you say we're on the other side, I'm going to go ahead and...
I didn't butt you in the grave.
He meant the other side of Town Creek.
The other, it's on the other side.
Other side of the bridge.
It's on Gettysburg, it's the lump account.
Folks, I'll tell everybody in this room, it don't matter, I got my ticket card, so it don't matter. Basically, my granddaughter ran, but I'm ready to go.
Mike, on the Westmoreland Road, what's the timeframe, what do you foresee us being able to get started on all this, number one? Number two, I just want a fair catch on the New Bridge Road Bridges. There were commitments made that we'd be doing one lane, you know, an east lane, and then a west lane so that, because we got farms all over the place in that area.
We'll do, we'll do one lane at a time.
Yeah, because we can't. They're, they're...
We will do one lane at a time. To answer your question, Mr. Chairman, we will proceed forthwith on these projects immediately.
Okay.
Well, we'll have to bid them out, but we have the money in the bank, so we will proceed immediately.
All right.
One survey.
Gentlemen, I need a motion to redesignate these funds for Town Creek Bridge Project officially, to move those to the two bridges on New Bridge Road as well as Westmoreland Road.
I'd be glad to make that mark. That's a good one, Mike.
Mr. Nixon first.
I'm second. I'll go make the motion.
Mr. Hall, I'm sorry, that is, Mr. Hall second. Any other discussion? All right, have none, all in favor of the motion, sticking up if I say aye? Aye, folks say no, motion carries. And folks, I hope you understand, let's take a five-minute break. We'll convene back in five minutes, please. I think we're, we're halfway through. Get a little lengthy sometimes, so thank you for your understanding. All right, we're back into our work session slash call meeting. Moving on to item 15. Consider approval of memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the replacement of Airport Road Bridge in designation of county funds for right-of-way acquisition. Mr. Melton?
Mr. Chairman, you have a proposal from GDOT in your packet for a price of $95,500 for right-of-way acquisition along Airport Road Bridge. That is their estimate. I think that's extremely high. But they will refund this money if the right-of-way acquisition is questioned.
That's just for right-of-way acquisition?
That's for half of the right-of-way acquisition.
I want to go back, I want to add, you know how much they're asking for? The borders?
Yeah, I know that they go, they're going, I had the, I had the actual numbers, I don't know what I did with it.
So I take it this is a...
They're going, they're going, they're going 300 feet, both sides of the bridge, and...
So would you?
Then they're going out, I think it's 180 feet in the center on.
I think it's a hundred and fifty feet in center line. It's, it's quite a distance.
One-eyed bridge, I ain't gotta show them one eye to see it, will you?
Mike, one thing I felt to ask you today. The bridge itself will be a two-lane bridge.
Yes.
Well, and share with the folks what this is, the state's gonna be paying for this.
The state is gonna rebuild, the state's gonna replace the bridge. The only thing we have to pay for is half of the right-of-way acquisition. Their estimate for the right-of-way acquisition was a hundred and.
Ninety-one thousand.
Ninety-one thousand.
Don't keep, don't go crazy like nothing happened, folks are holding out for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars down there for a right.
That's, and these are GDOT's figures, they're not ours, and I, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Nix, that's. Yeah, that's overkill, but, you know, all we're doing, set aside for these funds, and they're replacing the bridge.
Yes.
So.
And I think, I think when it comes to actual right-of-way acquisition, the number will be a lot less, and they'll have to refund us some of this money. But, the way they do it is we have to give them ninety-five thousand five hundred.
Have you seen the estimates on the bridge itself yet?
No.
When we have those, we'll share those with, with the, with the audience. It's another one of those, we're very fortunate, we found favor, so. Gentlemen, what's your, what's your pleasure?
Well, I think. Again, since it's down funky in my district. We take the favor from DOT and make the motion that we acquire, agree to acquire and pay the half of the right-of-way.
Okay, Mr. Hall, most, motion to approve?
I say.
Mr. Goode, second, any discussion?
Put that up front, is that what you're saying, we gotta put the money up front?
Yes, we have sent DOT's job.
When are they gonna, when are they gonna start, did I miss that?
I, I do not, I do not have a time when they're gonna start on the bridge.
But they want one now.
All right, close discussion, motion second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, folks say no. It was a four-five oh vote. Maybe leaning toward yes.
Lot of muddling going on.
Where does that money come out of?
Yeah, it comes out of Splotch.
It'll come out of Splotch.
Item sixteen, consider intergovernmental agreement with the City of Cleveland to transfer ownership of Oak Spring School Property and Building to White County, the City of Cleveland, that's the new tab. Sixteen, sixteen in your book. Mr. Mountain, you got the hill on this one?
Yes, sir, in your packet, gentlemen, you have an agreement that has been drafted, the City of Cleveland, to transfer the ownership of the Oak Spring, Oak Spring School Building and the property to the City of Cleveland. I believe the City of Cleveland has already approved this agreement on their side. And our county attorney has reviewed it, she, she is in favor of it, has approved it, and it's just up to the board, if the board would like to, go ahead and deed this property to the city. This agreement will be that. Number one, how many acres are we talking?
Two, two acres.
Number two.
Number two, what is the city's intent?
We're looking at making it part of our community, a community center for our municipal complex over there, like a part of the property.
One thing, and I'll say this on a personal note, I recognize that that building holds a lot of history and a lot of memories, and it means a lot to that community.
It does, it really does.
And, you know, we as the county have not used, it, I still, this is before my time on the board, the county got the property from the.
School Board.
School Board originally. I'm still trying to figure out how, I wasn't around that, I don't think you were around either at that time.
That'd be sad, probably that was before my day.
So, the county got ownership of it, and.
Four nil.
You know, with the City of Cleveland, you know, with plans for the Talon Building, it kind of lends itself to, it makes sense, we've had discussions for some time. Of maybe trying to make this item happen, and.
I guess the question is, is the community wanting you to save that building, try to redo the building?
Yeah, the community's very interested in renovating that building, doing, doing the preservation and, and making it available for the community to use, utilize.
Gentlemen.
Are we cut for the ice or what now? We're keeping it up, we're doing, made terrible order, look at one.
All right, motion Commissioner Goode to approval of intergovernmental agreement on the transfer of the Oak Spring School Property and Building for White County, to the City of Cleveland, do I have a second?
Sure.
Mr. Brown, second. I thought this, this is a win-win, I'll say that, thank you. All in favor of the most, if I say aye.
Aye.
Aye, folks say no. And I'll say this, Tom, go back to your board, I'm sorry, but he gets to decide on why your board is here. This is, you know, the county had no plans for the building that I'm aware of, in my years on the board, and.
We tried to think some about it in the last two years.
It's, it just makes sense, so, for you guys to have it and do something for that community.
Well, we appreciate your consideration and your, your offering, you giving to us to, to preserve this for the community. Like you said, it's a very important piece of history within White County, and actually within the state of Georgia and our, our nation, so. We're very fortunate to have the support that we have from the county and from our community to renovate and preserve that building, make use of it.
Thank you.
It needs to be utilized, you know?
If you don't use it, you lose it, in a manner of speaking, that's why.
And Tom, for the record, you get to start cutting the grass with me.
I'll let public works know tomorrow. Let those prisoners do it.
All right, okay, well, I'm gonna move us along here, and, and this is, this is a good, this is a good. That was a good, good deal, I'm glad we ever worked together on that. All right, item seventeen, consider appointment, appointment to the White County Drug Abuse Treatment and Education State Fund Advisory Committee, previously held by Commissioner Len Hall, Commissioner Hall is stepping down from that committee after years of service. All right, Commissioner Bryant first, Nix second, no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, folks say no, motion carries.
I didn't vote.
I'm sorry, do you say something? Okay, item eighteen. Consider preliminary approval in fiscal year two thousand nineteen in other judicial circuit budget, including circuit paid expenses for the Superior Court, Juvenile Court, District Attorney and Public Defender, tab eighteen. As you, gentlemen, you're aware of, we had a preliminary, you know, judicial circuit budget meeting last week. I think it went very well, and Commissioner, I'm sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Goode was able to sit in on that as well. And Mr. Mountain, are you prepared, or seems prepared, to give us a quick overview?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. In your book, you have the, you have the minutes from the meeting, you have the proposed budget for both the judicial circuit and Public Defender's Office. Budget went up slightly, but very slightly. I can't read the spreadsheet. Superior Court was plus point four three percent, Juvenile Court was plus two point three one percent, District Attorney was plus two percent. Total budget is seven sixty, oh six seven. And then the Public Defender's Office was plus fourteen percent, was point two eight percent. Our total Public Defender's budget was four fifty-seven, oh twenty-eight.
All right, the Public Defender, it's one of four thousand dollars of one of their county attorney positions, correct?
That's correct. And then, well, they also created one new position.
Because their, their case, their caseload.
A new admin position.
And on top of that, there was no fund balance to use, as we used eleven thousand the year before, so they decided not to use any fund balance, so then that caused that portion to have to be budgeted as well.
What's the, the county's, White County's portion that we're approving, the increase, that is. What is that figure, for record, please?
Our pro-rata share was, was, went from one twenty-one, four twenty-two to one forty-seven, nine ninety-five.
Yeah, and one, one reason was they decided to keep one seventy-five thousand, the fund balance?
Yes. Because their, their bills are paid on quarterly basis?
The unknown awayed heading portion is eighty-four, five seventy-four. And our portion for the Public Defender is one forty-seven, nine ninety-five.
So that one point three forty-four is a total across all three, the Public Defender, the District Attorney, and the.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, the biggest, biggest increase right there was adding, one more person, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand or so, plus.
Plus benefits.
At forty, ended up being about forty thousand.
For one, you position, including benefits, say that, I have to do, they paid him a salary of twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars, and the time they figured benefits, retirement, they figured forty thousand dollars. Plus another four thousand dollars for that salary increase for the one attorney, the bill was eight years, I think it was eight years, correct? They had not had a, cause for increase. Is their case, I'm, I'm being serious, I'm getting kind of unprofessional here, when. The greatest issue is their caseload would have.
All your representatives, eighty percent of the cases, we made.
Well, they said they, they said they do eighty-five percent of the cases.
And we, and we, Sheriff, and I think you could adhere to this, or agree with this, we see why our, our courthouse is just being squeezed so tight because the number of cases we're growing, and with growth in our county comes other challenges. That means increased law enforcement, increased courthouse.
It's the biggest issue we're having, one of the big issues right now in the court, is we can't keep the Juars up. We're tainting Juars, we're tainting cases with Juars, vice versa, with defendants, this kind of thing, and it's, it's not fair.
Well, and that's why, a good example, and we hit it on this a little while ago, that was brought up in our noted meeting, and that's why they were pleased, the, the Superior Court judges, that we're, be looking to take proactive steps in the next few years to address those issues.
It's either be proactive or get a rhythm, anything you want, whichever one's preferred, it's always nice to be proactive.
Gentlemen, I'll keep it simple, motion to approve the noted judicial circuit, White County's.
I want a motion to approve, I ask no questions, I want a motion to approve.
Commissioner Nix first.
I say.
Commissioner Goode, second, any other discussion? Have done, in favor, second if I say aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. And if we're done, but I'll share this with you, which Towns County, Union County, they're sole commissioners. Those commissioners, they already voted last week to approve the budget, county voted on theirs, I don't know what date theirs is, but. So, follow where I'm going.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate everybody working together. Item nineteen, consider approval of contracts with CSRA Probation Services Incorporated with White County Magistrate and Probate Course, item nineteen. Mr. Mountain?
These were, these two contracts are in your packet, they were sent to us by the, by the courts, and have already been signed by the judges. I think it's a formality for the board to sign off on this.
They're raising thirty-five, forty dollars a month, am I reading that right?
Pardon?
They're raising, they want a five-dollar increase per person?
Yeah, but we don't, we don't pay that.
I know that.
That's paid by the.
I know that too, and then you flip back over on about four or five pages with all the charges they charge for services, and we got twice as many people in court, and they wanting five dollars more person, so you don't pay, you go back to jails, no way either way, so. Just a question and a comment.
No, and I realize, it was in this same vein that the request was raised a couple of years ago, is everything. Mr. Mountain, are you aware, is everything operating accordingly? I know the judges have already approved this contract, and we're kind of a.
Hard I know, Mr. Chairman, they don't consult with me. I don't have any, any supervisory role over this operation.
In the last meeting, we approved the contract, we did a probation service for Superior Court, and this is just, this isn't the same company. Different company, but same issue with probate and magistrate for misdemeanor cases.
I don't remember, I'm asking for an increase, it was just to get the contract, is that correct, am I wrong?
I don't know, on those other, honestly, it had been so many years since those contracts have been executed. I can't say that that's even what they were charging, but those contracts we had on file were.
Yeah, ancient.
Were probably ten years old. And now they're trying to get everything updated, because the, the state really hasn't come down on these private probation companies about, you know, renewing their contract annually with the counties, sending the reporting that's required by state law.
The state should have.
It's not big time sort of in doing your own probation.
Do we get any of those funds?
I was just fixing to ask you about that.
Do we get any of those funds? Do we get any of that?
The funds.
From the private probation.
Don't get that. No, I mean, they're doing more cases, but yet, no.
One state, one does, the state, state probation, of course. Those misdemeanor cases, the state probation.
State don't do misdemeanor, they just do felony.
Let's make a note, I, I know we're, we're kind of far into this, and we. Mr. Mountain, I'd like to reach out to Probate Judge, and other judges involved in this, and.
This is for magistrate court.
Neil, how many bodies are, Sheriff, how many bodies are we talking about here? People, how many people are we talking about? That would be, that would be involved in this.
The violators?
Yeah, I mean, it's misdemeanor.
I probably got a hundred warrants down there right now, if I bind them, I'm gonna put them in jail.
That answer your question? Then I gotta pay for all that upkeep, I gotta get them.
Well, we ain't got some way to make money off it if we're not putting them in jail.
They'll certainly issue a probation warrant if they're off the ballot and prepared to pay, and that's to include the fines, I mean, and I may be, well, that's to include the probation supervision fee, if they don't pay that, and you know, if they just don't pay fines and this kind of thing, they'll issue a probation warrant, and I gotta put them in jail and house them and that kind of thing. I tell you what you need, you need a regional work camp. I've been preaching that for years, but you know, nobody, won't take that horse and run with it.
Well, we're talking about, honestly, and commissioner.
That's what we're talking about, is there a means for us to make enough money off of this to hire somebody to oversee them out on the road?
Have them pick up trash?
Using it to our advantage? I know we're not getting anything out of community.
I don't know that you could operate standalone county, that's why I say I think it has to be a regional concept. There's no doubt we're not, we're not down with one, and they've got all the other counties, that's. My thing, they can't afford to pay thirty five, they're not gonna pay forty, so.
You ever know what's gonna cost us keeping them down?
I don't know.
If they ever go to get some raise for them down.
Was it still what, what's the cost average per day, thirty, thirty five, forty? Well, I mean, outsourced, I'm sorry, I talk about outsourced, it's about what, forty?
Forty dollars a day. See what happens, I get, most of these folks have got substance, most of them have got some sort of substance abuse when they come to jail, and most of the time, a lot of them come to jail already need to be detoxed, well, guess what? I gotta detox these folks by, what, to the medical folks down there, and it goes right down to send them to the hospital, which I sent one this past week, it's probably gonna cost the county twenty thousand dollars or more of a hospital bill.
Well, let me tell you, this has come up at the board manager with the ACCG. We're working now diligently trying to come up with some kind of a plan, the most of these, this is concerning mental health. The board has had outstanding conversations about mental health, people don't need to be in jail, and that's not helping nobody by putting them in jail. So, the ACCG is working now, we're deep in a, trying to come up with some kind of a policy or some way to make some of this, kind of make some changes in it, especially on the mental health side.
The jails across state of Georgia, across the United States, is just becoming a mental health.
And they're not gonna give them kind of treatment in the jail, you're not giving them any kind of treatment there, so. What the ACCG working hard on, this is something new, this has come up in the.
I would just suggest if you, see what some of the other counties are doing in reference to probation and this kind of thing.
This county, I just pulled it up here, C S R A probation dot com, a little website, you can find out a lot by reading this article here about them.
They're some source, they're some source provider, correct? Is this the one that's?
Well, there's some more in George Mathis' model, this was, this is a spinoff of Central, if I get that.
Yeah, well, they got, they had some litigation and just kind of reorganized.
Didn't they, no, well, didn't they go on?
You know, the one who's kicked out of the state?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got some trouble.
California, they got sued for millions of dollars.
We're gonna do this, yeah, this is the California base. We're not gonna be able to fix this tonight, I mean, it's a fact, I think we're stuck with this contract, I think you say it like that. But I think there's, there are avenues that we need to be looking at. Mike, if you could huddle the sheriff, he's got tremendous insight, I might try to add something else to your plate, maybe one or two of us without a court, of course, and maybe some of the judges, and let's see, what opportunities right there, next go around, you know, there's, I, no hit agenda here, it's just. Thank you, Mr. Bryant, to touch some base on it.
Is this a one-year contract?
It's a one-year contract, correct? All right?
With that being said, I'll make the motion, that would go ahead with a contract for one more year. But in that motion, I also want it, my motion ordered that this board and this county look into other possibilities, while we're working on the next contract for the next year.
The downside of that, without some, some method to deal with these folks, you can't lock them all up. I don't like to just know these folks down in probation, he's got to be in jail. Or, but I still think a regional work camp, you get the surrounding counties to sit down and talk to you about it. I think that's, that'd give the judges some words in these grounds.
I need to say. I'll say it. Commissioner Hoffman?
Neil, while we're talking about this, what about people that are community service workers? How do they fall into this, do they fall into this category?
All the community services is governed through the probation vote. If they don't complete, if they don't complete the community service, they issue a warrant, they're gonna put them in jail.
So there you go again, you put them out to pick up trash, and they don't go back tomorrow, you put them in jail.
They don't complete the community service, they got to, they got to the building, put them in jail for.
It's like a cycle.
Yeah.
All right, close discussion, all favor, most say aye?
Aye.
Aye folks say no?
Aye.
Motion curious, four to one. All right, item twenty. Ms. Barbara, we're sorry, we're just kind of getting to you.
That's okay, I have good news for you, with what I have, this is the addendum number two.
Good news, worth waiting on.
Consider approval, item twenty of the addendum number two, fiscal year two thousand eighteen, contract legacy link incorporated for nutrition program service. Continue.
Okay, here's the good news, so compensation, number five B, on this addendum relates to increase of four thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars from legacy link to county to support the senior center meals. It comes from grant money that increased, it actually, that one is a, legacy link should have done that on addendum one several months ago, but they are catching up now, so it's been in action, but, so. Forty, four thousand one hundred ninety nine dollar increase. The five D, which is on there, reflects an eighty seven dollar increase because income tax, check off funds, it's always a very small amount of all of our budget, but it usually doesn't come into play until the last two months of the fiscal year, so it's been approved. The number six, the non-federal funds, the two other lines for B and the other part of that, just reflect the reduction of the county's outlay that accounts for the increase in grant funding.
We'd like to use. I keep it short, sweet and simple, most approve.
So much.
Commissioner Nick's first. Commissioner Goode your second. Any other discussion? Happy not a favor, signify by saying aye? Aye folks say no? Motion curious. Barbara, thank you, I keep hearing good things about the program, and please, I'd say, encourage your staff, I mean, really, we hear that. Probably more, we probably should be sharing that more aloud, but thank y'all very much for what you guys do.
We appreciate your support.
I always say this, is when we first met, it's ministry, that's what that whole program is, so awesome job. Item twenty one, consider approval of two thousand eighteen cooperative law enforcement plan with the US Forest Service Patrol, Forest Service land in White County. I had a note here, Sheriff, are you okay with this? But he sat down. It's.
No change from the prior year?
We don't get much at all.
They said there was no change from the prior year?
Yes, sir.
We get, Sheriff, that was your spot, no, that's okay, the, the forest service contract, whopping four thousand four hundred dollars. It's a liability, yeah, I mean, it is what it is, you're fine with that. Motion to approve the contract. Commissioner Bryant first.
Better to get a little bit from them than have to do it for nothing.
Commissioner Goode your second. The folks in the audience, I'm not making light of this, this is a annual contract that we do every year, and it started out, it was, we should get like twelve, fourteen thousand dollars, then every year it seemed like we were getting less and less.
I will say, we're one of the very few, very, very few counties that's still getting that money. Hopefully they cut it out, and most of the other counties.
Well, now, close discussion, all favor, if you got first second, say aye? Aye folks say no?
Little tater, twelve dollars.
Little tater better not tater?
Twelve dollars.
All right, all right, item twenty two, consider award of a under seventy thousand dollar certificate deposit currently held at Mountain Valley Community Bank, Mr. Jody?
Yes, sir, the county currently has a CD that is going to mature on May the eighteenth, maybe the nineteenth. And is currently at Mountain Valley Bank, and so in your packet you should see the submissions that were made by the banks. They had three submissions and then no, one no response, depending on if you're gonna look at a six-month term or a twelve-month term. Six-month term, United Community Bank had the best rate, and twelve-month term, South State Bank has the best rate.
Can we pull it out?
Yes, still, here's the year for me.
No, it'll just, no fees, whatever.
Yeah.
And it's currently earning point four two one percent, so.
What community bank?
Haversham. If I'm, what I'm gearing up here, motion to approve South State, one-year rate of one point zero five percent for a hundred seventy thousand dollar certificate deposit. Commissioner Nick's first.
My second.
Commissioner Goode your second, just a question. You may not, hold on just a second here. Give me one second, I just, I picked up on something. Banks are supposed to be list, listing their yield, your APY, and this is the rate. I mean, they've already committed to the rate, so it's fine, but that's the bank agreement coming out.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, they're supposed to be listed as APY, but anyway. And we'll talk after, we'll talk afterwards.
Who didn't do it?
South State did.
South State.
They didn't get.
They didn't beat, yeah, but it had to do with the rate.
Yeah.
State, federal law requires that they disclose certificate rates both in a rate form and a yield form based upon the days of the year and what have you, so. Close discussion, all in favor of South State, say aye?
Aye.
Aye folks say no? Motion curious. All right. Ms. Jody? Monthly financial status report.
And I will go through this very, very quickly.
Thank you.
Okay. Revenues for March were four hundred ninety five thousand seven hundred fifty two dollars, expenditures were at one million three hundred ninety one thousand two hundred twenty three dollars. The year-to-date, our revenues collected, they're at eighty four percent, and our expenditures are at seventy one percent. At the end of March, we should be sitting at seventy five percent. Alcohol taxes and fees, the license fees received for nine months of the budget year sit at thirty seven thousand nine hundred sixty nine dollars, excise tax, fifty nine thousand eight hundred ninety seven dollars, so for a total of alcohol fees and taxes for nine months, we've collected ninety seven thousand eight hundred sixty six dollars, which sits us at eighty five percent received. The tablet tax received for the month of March, ninety two thousand five hundred seventy three dollars, for a yearly total of six hundred seventy thousand dollars, six hundred seventy thousand eight hundred fifty three dollars, at eighty six percent received. The March local option sales tax loss fees.
Hold the tablet tax, or what, or five or something like, are we not, are they not scared of you for that rate that we give, the percentage that we give, that that, did they not hope for that to go up?
Yes.
Two nine one.
Yes.
How much, what percentage was, went from, went up to like sixty five percent?
Sixty five percent, I meant, sixty, sixty five.
The loss received for the month of March was one hundred eighty thousand three hundred ninety six dollars. We did receive our April figures on Thursday, and I can go ahead and let you know that April went back up, it's two hundred thirteen thousand five hundred forty seven dollars. So it increased a good, a good bit.
Go ahead, I, go ahead. My wheels are spinning, my brain is running out now.
The hotel motel tax received for the month of March, forty three thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, for a yearly total of six hundred ninety five thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars, and we are ninety nine percent received already on our hotel motel. Our twenty fourteen squash received for the month of March, three hundred thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Cleveland and Helen both received thirty eight thousand nine hundred and sixty five dollars each, and after our funds were earmarked for the debt service payment, that put a hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred sixty four dollars into the county's project fund. And as Kevin stated earlier in the meeting, our April receipt was three hundred fifty five thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, so that, that went back up, so I think we're through our slow winter months and things are on the rise again. And that slide just shows up a history of the squash receipts. And our separate funds, as you can see, solid waste is at seventy two percent, nine one one at seventy two percent, the Appalachian Regional Drug Enforcement Office seventy one percent, and a NOTA sits at sixty percent. And again, we should be somewhere around seventy five percent. And unless you have questions, that concludes the presentation.
Yeah. Barbara, because I can't reflect everywhere, twenty eight days of everywhere.
We'll pick up this conversation, and Mr. Melton, I know you're gonna leave the seats regardless of loss, but just having time to think, I might have to sleep on this spread about now. I won't say I might be, I might be open to a higher number on estimates for this loss and negotiations. I'm just saying it to myself, I don't speak to nobody else. Okay, all right. Sorry about that, folks. Lots to go over to that. Okay, Mr. Melton? Any comments?
No, sir. Unless four dozen questions.
You guys got anything for that? Your staff? All right, and again, folks, I want, I want off the floor for citizen participation.
That's all, I was gonna ask you a whole thing. Did, did John give you any idea about when the bids were gonna be left for, or put out for our bid on the trailhead?
Should be any day. I will call him tomorrow because he already gave me an estimated timeline, and that has since passed. So, I will call him in the morning and find out where our bids were.
It might be kind of hard in the morning to get a budget here, you start to hate.
I'll send him an email. Where we're at.
Again, I'm gonna apologize to everyone in the audience, I know we had a lot of folks leave, put the length of our meeting, but I will open the floor up for citizen participation, I know this is not, this wasn't intended to run everybody off of that, but it's not the purpose. Is there anyone who got any comments, questions, would you go to the talks? Tom, you've already spoken. Go ahead, Tom.
What is the staff's bathrooms, they're free to park?
Yeah, that's what we're targeting.
So that's all part of that? Okay. My counsel was asked, that's all.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find out when they're gonna get, when they're gonna be put out for bid.
Okay, good, all right.
I didn't hear if they'd buy the budget to improve for a NOTA, commissioner, Mr. Holt, that.
The total was two.
And then let, let staff give the exact number, I will get that for you guys at the meeting, if you don't mind, but we will get that for you. Anything else, guys?
Motion to adjourn.
Um, we do. Um, we do, sorry to accept that, we do have an executive session.
Good to ride.
Mayor wants to outdo, get carried out here, cuffed tonight, put my car in, you can be in that room, I can send some...
In and out, sure, quick, anything going on? We will not be having a meeting next Monday, because we just took care of the world tonight, I think, um, we may be having an additional call meeting in the month of May, we're starting to get the budget season, what have you, um, some of us will be, uh, convening back here in the morning, at eight AM, so, less than twelve, uh...
Y'all start saucing biscuits in the morning?
Uh, we will.
Why don't we just spend them at, like a party?
Would staff please pick up some biscuits in the morning?
Yeah, by then.
Appreciate that. Anything else? Motion to go to executive session.
So, good.
Commissioner Hoffman first. Commissioner Goodger second, all in favor say aye? Aye folks say no? We're in official executive session, guys, Jody, you get bill that you can bring?
Yes.